Good evening. Welcome to our school board meeting tonight. It is Wednesday, October 15th, 7:00 PM. Welcome to the show. Kelly Lynn, let's get started with roll call.
Mr. Andreessen.
Hello.
Mrs. Briscoe. Mr. Bush. Mrs. McMillan. Mrs. Ost. Mrs. Tony. Mrs. Zlinski.
Okay, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi, kids. You are able to come up here tonight and you're able to showcase your art to not only this room, but our community, and you are the highlight of our evening. Thank you for coming up here. Couple things, we've got kids and parents in the audience. I'm glad you're all here. After the presentation, I know a lot of people want to take pictures, not only with their children, but maybe their children next to the art. We're going to take about a five-minute break after the kids' presentation. Feel free to take those pictures. I think that's really important. Afterward, we're going to get going with public comments. If you'd like to stick around, you are absolutely welcome to. It's entirely up to you. But beyond that, I'm happy you're here tonight because this helps showcase why what we do with with the schools is so important. That being said, Kristen, would you like to help me with the art presentation?
All right. Thank you. Artists who are representing each of our three schools. We have two students from each school. So if those six students could come on up, as well as the art teachers that are here tonight. Okay, so we have two members from each school tonight. It was a little hard to practice when we're from three different places, but we're going to do the best we can. So first, I want to introduce Mr. Hippelhauser. He's our art teacher at MIS, and he has two students that he nominated to be here tonight. So he wants to step forward with Violet and Victoria. And then you can face the audience. There you go. Okay, Mr. Hippelhauser is retiring at the end of the year, and I asked him to come tonight, and he was like, man, I thought I never had to go to a board meeting, but leave it to my last year. I had to do it in my time. So we appreciate his years of service in our art program and all he's done for our artists here in Mokina. So thank you. We wish you the best, and in a few months, we'll celebrate your retirement. But we will celebrate Violet first. So if you want to grab Violet's picture, and then if you want to step up towards the middle together. Be able to show the board. Go ahead, Violet. All right, so Violet is being highlighted tonight for her Symbols of Me project. This is the beginning of their abstract art unit. It's their first step in moving from realistic representation art and the abstract ideas of modern art. This project also allows students to share and connect on common interests represented by the symbols on their banner. So we are very proud of Violet and her artistic expression within her Symbols of Me project. Let's give her a big round of applause. All right, that's okay. We're here for art, not necessarily public speaking tonight. All right, Violet, you can come back over here. Nice job. Yeah. So Victoria is being spotlighted tonight for her shoe design. The shoe design is the first project in the fashion unit in third grade. The fashion unit spotlights an area of commercial art and also careers in fashion. The shoe designs focus on creating a shoe design that follows a function. Form follows function, and is a basic rule in the design of most items from houses to spaceships. It will be followed by shirt designs and seasonal outfit designs coming soon in the art room. So let's give a big round of applause to Victoria. We'll have to get a pair of those made for you, Mr. Hippelhauser. All right, so those are our two MIS students. You guys can kind of step right over here, and then we'll spotlight our MIS students next. This one, I had to joke around with the girls when they walked in. They're both named Fiona. So I said, and already being artist at MIS, you have to have the name Fiona. So if you want to step forward, Mrs. Dabelhop, she is our art teacher at MIS. Hey, you guys can go head to the middle together. All right. So this is one of the very first projects that was new, I believe, to the MIS art room this year. Students were asked to design an official school T-shirt. They showed off their artistic talents and school spirit by creating a unique design that represents their school community. The winning design will be featured on shirts worn by the staff, and the winners will also receive special recognition at school. Don't forget, shirts will be available for purchase in the near future. So these are our top two designs. Nice job, ladies. And then last but not least, we have two students representing our eighth graders from our junior high. Their art teacher, Mrs. Vichy, could not be here. She's so disappointed, but she had just found out her daughter was going to a championship softball game, so she's at that right now. So good luck, Lucy, at the game. So our eighth graders are showing you a project that is called the Cross Contour and Mark Making Painting. This is a multimedia project that incorporates various art techniques. Students had to sketch out objects, then draw them to scale. They lightly drew cross contour lines to show the contour of the forms. They used watercolor paint to paint the background in a warm or cool color scheme, and then painted the objects with the opposite color scheme. Students then added large, thick shapes following the contour of the form with light markers or highlighters, and then they also had to add smaller shapes and details, creating variety. Students were then encouraged to create a variety of shapes, thicknesses, and colors to help add more visual interest. So tonight, we are highlighting Andrew, on the N, and Lila, our eighth graders, again from our junior high. So that is our spotlight tonight, showcasing six of our artists from the district. We are very fortunate to have wonderful art teachers that support our artists as they blossom from kindergarten all the way up to eighth grade. This was one of their very first projects, but it's so cool to see where they end up by the end of the year with the different clay projects they do, multimedia projects they do. So thank you for being here, and wonderful job to our artists. We are so proud of you. And then Mr. Andreessen has a little something for you.
I know it's kind of scary to get up here in front of everybody. Thank you for coming up here. They all look really, really nice. Families, we've got about five minutes. If you'd like to walk around, take pictures, come around, see some of the art, et cetera, this is what it's all about, so please enjoy. Okay, 7:15, let's keep rolling, but that was a really, really nice way to start the evening. I liked that a lot. Okay, we have, everybody sitting down or ready? We have three items for public communication. Debbie Blank, you are up first.
Seriously. All right. First of all, I'm up here speaking on Michelle Matt's behalf. She had another commitment this evening. But before I read what she wrote, I want to publicly thank her for taking over my role, and I think she did an amazing job. She really did. She did an awesome job. Okay. Michelle said she wants to thank the Board of Education, Mr. Gurney, Dr. Johnson, Mr. Munch, Mrs. Chorley, the Mokina Police Department, the Mokina Fire Department, along with all of the staff and students of District 159. She wants to thank them for their support in making the Volley for a Cure game a success once again. She's pleased to report that we raised $3,484.76 for the Mokina Cancer Support Center, which is amazing. 100% of all the money raised for the event will go directly back to the center, and people within the area are welcome and encouraged to please use it. There are so many different things they have for people. So that's all I've got, but thank you, everybody, on her behalf.
Thank you for coming. Christian Graves.
Christina? I'm sorry, I've got terrible handwriting. Good evening. My name is Christina Graves. I'm a Mokina resident and taxpayer. I'm here tonight because I care deeply about our schools, and I also care about how our community's money is being managed. Over the past few years, homeowners in Mokina have watched their taxes climb steadily. Even as the district's rates gone down, my District 159 tax bill rose from $4,047 in 2023 to $4,273 in 2024, a 5.6% increase, mostly because of increased assessments, but that's still 5.6% that you guys received last year, over and above what you would have normally received. Now, the 2025 levy, the Illinois Department of Revenue has set the CPI at 2.9, which translates to about 0.2445% tax increase for our 2026 bills. That means anything above 2.9 would require a referendum. At 2.9, the district would collect approximately $900,000 more from taxpayers, roughly $121 per household. At 5%, it's about $1.6 million more, or 214 per household. According to the district's FY '23 audit, District 159 already collected $18.1 million in local property taxes, which made up nearly 70% of the district's total $21.7 million in revenues. Of that, $12.5 million went to the educational fund, covering teacher salaries, benefits, classrooms, and operations. Another $3.4 million went to operations, maintenance, $471,000 of transportation, and $525,000 to debt service. We also still have Fund 21, created by the Warm, Safe, and Dry Referendum, which funds building, repairs, and maintenance, including the new shed for the snow and outdoor equipment. Before asking for more, the community deserves transparency on what these additional dollars will fund and whether the district has explored ways to manage costs responsibly. For example, the district currently offers three PPO health insurance plans. There's no mid-range or high deductible alternatives, which keeps district insurance costs unnecessarily high. Even more concerning, administration and their entire families receive fully paid health insurance, while teachers, the people in the classrooms, pay the highest premiums for their own coverage. That imbalance deserves review before taxpayers are asked to contribute more. And let's not forget the real-world impact of these tax increases. Most homeowners pay property taxes through escrow, meaning each levy increases automatically, raises their monthly mortgage payment. When the tax bill goes up, lenders must collect more each month and maintain an extra two-month cushion. So families not only see higher payments, but often receive escrow shortages, notices demanding hundreds of dollars of upfront costs. So your 200 is 400 to me, because I have to cover that in my escrow shortages. That's not abstract, that's real money coming out of our grocery budgets. I'm not here to say no to supporting our schools. I'm here to say, show us the numbers, spend money wisely before taxing more. Our community deserves transparency, fairness, and stewardship.
Thank you for coming.
You could have given me 10 more seconds to finish.
I'm being fair to everybody. Thank you.
Everybody.
Time clock. Erin Min.
I do have a quick question. Getting up last, please. That's a request that you'd like to write tonight, if somebody's wondering that. Or do you want me to take six minutes and read hers, too?
You have the same three minutes as everyone else does. If you would like to read your three minutes, you are welcome to.
But my question is, will somebody from the board read hers, like she requested to? And you responded to her email, so I know that you got it.
So, so under board policy, we're going to take that information and share it with the board in the next month's meeting. That's under board policy.
I look forward to more board policies being enforced. So, good evening. I am Erin Min. Among other things, I'm a Mokina resident, crossing guard with the police department, Mokina 159 parent, and one of the library trustees. Tonight, I'm sharing some of what I shared at the community listening tour with Superintendent Gurney. He shared insight into some, and I anticipate movement on others in the coming months. Catenuity and attention to detail. Often, the onus is on parents to figure things out. What steps are the district taking to provide consistent information across platforms? For example, MJHS included great graphics in the newsletter regarding live assistance procedures. Those same graphics and instructions should be on the website, as well as similar graphics for the other schools. What systems are being put in place to update the website regularly, such as current employees being added and those no longer employed by the district removed within X days of their last day? Will sandwich boards please be considered? These can promote events without having to update the marquee daily. They could also have QR codes to signups or other important links. This could be helpful at every school near drop-off pickup lane, and intentionally placed during events, like participation in five essential surveys could get a bump if a large QR code and topic were inside the gyms when parents are waiting around for a board event or answer to start. I'm thankful for the opportunity given to the new journals and club at MIS, including Listening to Them, and now everyone who wants to play soccer during recess is able to. And so we all benefit. I look forward to hearing about more students, staff, as well as parents' voices and needs being heard and met. How is 159 planning on maintaining classroom size when retracting the deficit, enrollment is increasing, and rewarding are above the state average in class size? And community engagements. Parents have been allowed to be on committees in recent years with a very minute role, with a very narrow scope, such as for advanced learners. The only input the district would accept was regarding how parents and the community members wanted information updates shared with them, and similar for the handbook committee. In what ways can 159 expand this? What will the parent advisory council look like? And lastly, strategic plan. As a result of surveys that identified priorities, but steps on improving communication are flawed. Families in the community want two-way communication, not just glimpses into highlights. How can the district include stakeholders in this and not just talk at them? Big as a fab for the teachers and staff and community systems, both seem to be a step in the right direction. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Erin. Moving on, we... Moving on, we have a presentation of the annual audit. Thank you for coming tonight.
Well, thank you for having me. I won't take offense to saying the kids were the highlight and not the audit, but I'll let that go for this year.
Oh, don't worry about audits are cool, too.
Yeah, thanks. All joking aside, I want to thank you for having me, and I especially want to thank Dr. Shaw and Janet and the entire team for making this another successful audit year. Without your help, this is not possible, so thank you. Next, I'm going to go through the annual financial report with you, which is the thicker the packets you received. And if you turn to page one, you'll find our water bucket name and letterhead. This is our independent audit report in which we provide a modified opinion due to the fact that the school district reports on modified cash basis, which is not a performance with GAAP, however, is allowed under ISB guidelines. With the exception of this modification, it was an otherwise clean audit year, in which we found no issues with internal controls or the numbers as they're presented. If you skip about three more pages, you'll run into the management discussion and analysis. This section really provides a summary of how the year performed in narrative form. So if you have questions on fluctuations from year to year, or what the numbers truly mean, this is where you want to go to find those answers. I'm next going to have you skip ahead to what would be your income statement, which is on pages 19 and 20. So towards the bottom of page 20, you'll notice that the general fund, which is your main operating fund, it's made up of your education, operations, and maintenance toward and working cash funds, had a debt decrease of about $2.1 million, which is consistent with what was budgeted for in the current year. The notes of financial statements will begin on page 22. And the notes really provide further detail into how we came up with the figures that we did with supporting schedules. Within there, you're going to find your long-term debt and your capital asset schedules. I'm not going to go through the notes with you tonight, so I'll have you skip ahead all the way to page 60. Page 60 is the start of your budgetary information, so if you want to see how a specific fund performed based on what was budgeted, this is where you'd see those comparisons. Does anyone have any questions?
So this is an annual audit, meaning we do this once a year. It's there. Anybody that wanted to see it, it's a public document, and we essentially are passing all the checkmarks we should be. The financials are operating under tolerances. Is that a fair idea?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, sir. What's your name?
Don Shaw.
Hello.
Hi.
Thank you for coming tonight. Mr. Shaw, I think what Jim just asked was, can the public find this document on our website? But I don't think that's true, is it?
It will be posted, I believe.
Oh, it's not just the annual financial report that's submitted to the state that's on our website? It's this whole packet? Both of those that you're referencing are on the website? When you look on the website, there's one that says audit, and there's one that says AFR. The audit is the ISB audit that's in an Excel format, and then the FR is like this, more in a narrative form. Both of them are on our website under our transparency page. Okay, okay. So I just didn't recall, I think I am normally going to that ISB form, so I just wanted to confirm this was on our website. So this, I do have a couple of questions. This management letter is dated October 2nd. Is this, I was told that we received this today. Is...
Yeah, so our opinion was October 2nd. So that's when we had our opinion. We did our work up to... So that's when we had our opinion, we did our work up to October 2nd. So this is the most updated items that we have.
So was this part of what was given on October 2nd?
It's the same, same documents together.
Together, okay. Um, and then, when I look at, there's a couple of things that, you know, looking at the past couple of years, right? And kind of where we were and where we are now. You know, the board just received this 30 minutes ago when we sat down at this table. So looking at it while we're sitting here for the first time, is a little inopportune to be able to ask questions on it. But, you know, I am familiar with kind of the format that you've presented in the past. One of the things that you have acknowledged in a specific statement in past audits was that internal controls were not a part of your scope?
So we do perform walkthroughs over your internal controls. So we perform walkthroughs over your cash receipts, disbursements, payroll, P-card, student activities. So that is part of our audit. However, we don't provide an opinion on the effectiveness of those.
Right, and I'm just curious, like I said, it was a specific statement that was included concerning the limitation of your scope as it relates to internal controls that was included in previous year's audit. I don't see it here, is it, is it here?
It is, yeah.
Okay, what page is that? You know?
Uh, so it's going to be included in the audit opinion between pages one and three. So part of our audit, we provide a financial audit. We don't provide an internal control audit.
Right.
So that, those are two separate things.
Right.
So we're engaged to perform a financial audit just based on the actual numbers.
Yeah, so, you know, it's neither here nor there, but last year, you had this independent auditor's report. And then immediately following that, there was a statement specific to the limitation of your review of the internal controls. And basically saying you did not have that as a part of your audit.
So what you're referring to is because we have to, we use to include what is called the GATA cipher within our audit report. So with that, we had to include that opinion. However, now we're, we're issuing that completely as a separate document. But on page three, the last sentence talks about that we considered internal controls over financial reporting and compliance. So that's kind of where that, that verbiage comes from.
When you say it's, it's included in a separate report, what are you referring to?
So we have a separate document. It's the GATA cipher, which shows all your different grants that, that occurred through the state.
Can you let her know what GATA stands for?
Uh, Grand Accountability Transparency Act.
Okay.
I don't know how I came up with that, so. So, we've had a lot of issues with GATA when we included it within our audit report. So we decided to help GATA understand, we issued that separately. So part of the issue that we have here today with the change in the opinions is because we're not issuing it within the audit report. And the second part of that, we're also going to be having a single, what's called a single audit, which is another audit that we test federal expenditures. However, we performed our testing, but the federal government haven't released the documents that we need to actually press print. So that, those internal control documents and opinion will be in the single audit once the federal government allows us to print it.
Is that for the, the same fiscal year then? You'll retro back to that and complete that?
It is, so we did all the testing. We have the draft of what the federal government, it's called the, the compliance supplement. So we reviewed the draft of it, and we feel comfortable over our testing based on that. We don't expect changes, but the federal government said we can't release it until they actually approve that.
Okay, so I have a couple more questions. So when we look, I just looked briefly, and, and I'd like to get your opinion on how to interpret this. On page nine, you know, this is just kind of the big picture, right? Is that, is that an accurate summary? Is this is kind of the big picture?
Yeah, so I wouldn't focus too much on the government-wide financials. Because that's including all of your capital assets and your long-term debt.
Okay.
So what I would primarily focus on is, as I mentioned, that your, your true day-to-day, your operation funds, which start on page 17 through page 20.
But, but, but if we want to see the whole, the whole combined?
So this, what does include all of your long-term assets, capital assets, long-term debt, as well as your TRS, THIS, IMRF. So that government-wide financial analysis includes all those super-long-term items.
I, I like this because it shows the ending position and the beginning position and the changeover from year to year, right? So you could see the ending position went down from the previous year. And in the couple years that I looked at prior to, to this document, we had been going up in our net position from one year to the next. So, you know, this is, uh, we were in a, a deficit position for this past fiscal year that's in this document. And, and we are projecting and budgeting for the same, a similar deficit this fiscal year. So it's concerning to see that our net position went down last year because to me then, you know, the expectation is that would happen again this year. And so when, when I, when I think about, you know, the budget, and then also, I just want to ask you about this, because it's kind of all related. If you go to your management letter, prior year recommendation number one, this has been a point that, that has been a concern for multiple years. And, you know, I think we had all known that this was going to be the case with, with how the fiscal year ended. But, um, what is the best practices to prevent this? What, what financial controls? I struggle to see how, you know, our policy says that the board approves a budget, and that is the maximum amount that can be spent from that fund. And you're seeing?
I, I don't think that it's the max that you can spend. I, I would say the budget is, is used as a tool to make sure that you're, you're abiding by what your budget is. But it's, I wouldn't say that it's incorrect to go over the budget. That does happen from time to time because the budget is really just a, a best, best guess, a best estimate to plan for the, the finances of the district.
So, um, yeah, and, and, you know, what, what may be in practice may not be, I mean, it is our policy. So perhaps we need to revisit board policy. But, um, I mean, our policy says that the maximum amount that can be spent out of any fund is what is approved by the board in the budget. So, um, and, and now we have multiple consecutive years that there are funds that exceed what we have budgeted, right? So what my question is, is like, in your experience as far as like financial controls or how the board can protect from having these situations continue to happen? What, what would be your recommendation for us to do that?
Well, I will say the, the budget's approved by the board. And then on a monthly basis, you're provided treasury reports and you're provided the, the expenses that occur in the year. So in a way, you, you are providing that information and are approving those expenses.
So you're saying that we have to approve the budget? Our policy says that expenditures can't exceed the budget, but that somehow in the interim?
The, the, the budget is not like a, a legal, this is the max you can spend. That's, that's not what the budget is, is meant to be used for.
Okay.
The budget's meant to be used for a tool to, to make sure that you're not going exceeding excessively. But obviously, things occur during the year. Truction's a little more expensive, transportation occurs, special education. So it's, it's really hard for you to just put a, a straight cap with the budget when you have all these different factors that go on throughout the entire year.
Right.
So part of the budget is, as long as you, you don't have to, I believe it's 5%, correct me if I'm wrong, 10%. So if it's, if your budget exceeds 10%, then you should be doing an amended budget. But for $340,000, that was well below the, the requirement to perform an amended budget.
Well, we, I mean, we do an amended budget, and we're still ending up where we're exceeding. So what is your, what is your thought on that?
Again, I can't really provide an opinion. I don't have a, the day-to-day information. So our job is to present what are the facts?
Right.
Not necessarily what, what a.
Okay, so, so your, your prior year recommendation, and this was the same as the prior year and the prior year before that, right? So this prior year recommendation has been?
Very common comment that we get.
So, so you are making a recommendation that we do not have this occur? Meaning we do not have funds over budget? Is that accurate, that you're recommending that this be cured?
Yeah, we're, we're letting you know this is more informational. This isn't like a, a red flag. This is more financial information so that you can use when you go to budget next year.
Right, which this has been in here for multiple years, right? So we're, we're not?
I mean, last year was only IMRF for $19,000. So I mean, to me, that doesn't raise any red flags.
The, the words here are that we recommend the district investigate the causes of funds over budget and adopt appropriate future funding measures. What do you think those future funding measures are or would be? What do you, what would you recommend we do?
I can't provide that, that's management decisions. So that's going to be based on trends from year to year and the day-to-day operations.
Okay.
This is more of like an informational, hey, your funds were over budget. You may want to look into why that occurred, so you can adjust it for next year.
Okay, but that, but there's no, there's nothing that happens if we don't, because that's what's happened is we're not, and then it's here again, and then we're not.
So if, as I mentioned, if it goes over that 10%, then we would have, have a comment.
Okay, okay. Okay, and then, um, so I just have a couple more quick questions. I didn't see anything, again, I mean, we just got this, so it's kind of like hard to.
I apologize for the timing. Not sure when you guys received it, but.
We just, we just got it.
If I may, we all have it in front of us. It's approximately 60 pages. In order to be fair to everyone, I would invite you all to read it and submit additional questions like we normally do after the meeting. I think that would be fair to all the board members as they are able to read it, digest it, and continue to think about it. Because I'm sure that there are other questions that come up. However, the amended budget is more of a, it's more of a check-in. We don't have to do it, we do it every year in order to be transparent, but also to make sure the numbers are where they should be. We do have a budget guideline with our fund balances, so that has been followed. And I appreciate you guys taking your time to look at it, and thank you for sharing this report with us.
Excuse me, Mr. Andreessen, I'm not done asking questions. That Mr. Shaw is here today, and I have my questions, and I prefer to ask him right now, if that's okay? That's why you're here, right, to have us?
I mean, if there are additional questions, then I'm happy to work with Dr. Shaw and answer any other questions.
And I'm trying to be fair to everybody.
I'll just, I'll just ask a couple more questions, and then we can move on. And can I contact you directly then to ask the rest of my questions?
Yeah.
Okay, awesome.
Terrible as my contact information.
So, let me just ask about your opinion. I didn't, I just looked quickly at this economic factors and next year budget and rates.
What page are you on?
Page 13. This talks about this year, right? What we can, what your thoughts are on, or was it you who did the audit? Is it a team of people or?
Yeah, it was me and a team of people. But the management discussion analysis is verbiage from, is from Terry.
Oh, so this isn't, this isn't you?
This isn't part of like our audit financials. The major discussion analysis management meeting the, the district.
Okay, so you're just documenting what our district has told you about what we see as the economic factors that will be impacting?
Correct.
Okay.
When, because we're only at fieldwork for, you know, one week. And we're only doing the audit for three months from start to finish. So we don't have the day-to-day knowledge to know the factors why. And again, as I mentioned, the changes from year to year, it's hard for us to say the exact reasons why. We present on the facts, not necessarily why things occurred.
Do you, do you have any opinion on, I'm going to direct you to page uh, well, it doesn't matter what page. Do you have any opinion on what we can expect to happen with federal funding? And what, what your, nobody has?
I, I can't answer that. You know, as I mentioned, the federal government still hasn't released anything. I cannot speak to that.
Okay, um, all right, I think I just have one, one more question. I'm just scrolling down. Okay, um, so I guess I will follow up with you, and I appreciate your time. As far as the timeline though, for like next year, what can we as a district do to make it so that we're not, I mean, I think this is due today to the, to the state, right?
We did submit it today, so we are.
Oh, it's already submitted?
Yeah, correct.
So that's before the board had an opportunity to look at it?
So in order for us to file, we don't need board approval as long as we get the permission and approval from the district.
So our board policy, I think, says that the board has to approve it before it's submitted, doesn't it? Or you get, you check that, okay. So it is submitted, and what can we do next year to have it so that the board can, can not approve it? Review it and ask, you know?
So I will say, uh, October is a very, very hard deadline. We're, you're a junior end. For us to perform a full audit in that small time period is very difficult. We go with the mantra of, we extend probably 95, 96% of our clients pass that October 15 deadline. Because ISB actually already says, October 15th, they're not worried about. They're more concerned as long as it's filed with by December 15th. That's the true deadline. ISB kind of realizes that, that October 15 deadline is not realistic. I don't know how much more the district can do, to be honest, because we did fieldwork early July. So that's really the absolute earliest that you could do.
Yeah, I just looked at like the past years when the board reviewed it and, you know, got it for the first time. And, I mean, in recent years, we got it in August and we got it in September. So it's just like, it seems to be pushing back, you know, so just curious.
Yeah, I, I would challenge August, that does seem very early.
Yeah.
I know in the past, I've presented October consistently for the last five, six years.
I think there was September, but anyway.
September, but, but part of the problem is there was also some. There might be one September, but part of the problem is there was also some, I don't know if Actuary has another piece of it that we don't control.
So you don't provide that, you have that, put that, you have to enlist some other...
Correct.
Got it, got it.
Yeah, that's another third party.
Right.
You don't do that.
calculation and yeah, study or whatever they do.
Yeah, so we have to wait for that to be completed.
Yep.
To go final.
Yep, okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Shaw. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yes, I just have one quick question. So you said a modified opinion.
Modified cash-based.
Cash-based, yes. So basically clean opinion except for that. So my question is why the community is kind of hearing that? No, they might not understand what that means. I used to audit school districts, so I know what that means and I kind of get that. So my question to you is, how many districts roughly, I'm not going to pinpoint, but like, I mean, that's a pretty common thing that districts are in modified cash. Can you like maybe take a guess on how many districts are on a cash basis versus how many are on a full accrual basis? I guess what I'm trying to get at is how common is this?
It's very, it's pretty common. I would say our split is probably 60, 40, 70, 30 is about the percentages. The accrual basis is really meant if you go out for, you know, you have a lot of debt, then possibly you would want to consider that because it'll impact your interest rates. But again, that's a management decision.
No, thank you. I just wanted to clarify to the community that might be listening, that might not understand that. This is, in your eyes, it's like 60% of districts get the same comment. So it's not like, you know, Mokina's an outlier in a way.
Yeah, as I mentioned, it is allowed under ISB guidelines, so it is allowed, so...
Okay, thank you.
I have, I'm sorry, can I just, as far as adding to your scope, and if the district or the board wanted to enlist you to do a full review of internal controls, I assume that that is something you guys can do for us?
Yeah, so that would be what we call agreed-upon procedures. So that would be a separate audit completely.
Right.
Where we would work with you on a fee, a separate fee outside of the audit.
Right.
And provide further analysis over internal controls if you're wanting to.
Is there a recommendation that you have for best practices as to how often a board should look at that?
No, there's not really like a set measurement for that. I'll say I've been doing school district audits for 10 years, and I've done maybe 10 internal control, agreed-upon procedures.
Right.
So it's not super common.
Yeah.
But it is something that we are able to do.
You can do.
Yeah.
And what is that typically incorporated into this or it's a separate thing, right?
It would be a complete, yeah.
You're just coming in in down season and doing that.
Yeah.
And then the, I noticed that, you know, you, your report commented on like a legal compliance review where you could audit compliance with laws or regulations and, you know, different requirements, policy maybe. Is that something you guys can do as well or...
So that's part of the single audit.
Oh.
That's part of what we do, making sure that the, basically what you're spending the federal funding for follows what the grant is meant for. So that's, that is part of...
You're already doing that?
Yes.
You're, that's what's still in process.
Yeah, so anytime you go over $750,000 in federal expenditures, which is going to be bumped up to a million, a single audit is required. So that is part of our testing.
And we're at like a million now, is that right? I don't know. I just have that number in my head. That's okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you for your help. And as I said earlier, you are all welcome to submit additional questions after tonight, after you have a chance to fully read this. That's totally fine. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to our school improvement plan.
I'm having so many technical difficulties this evening. So this is our yearly presentation from our principals regarding our school improvement plans for this upcoming school year. So each principal has prepared a summary of their goals and some of their action steps to accomplish these goals throughout the course of the year. So I will turn it over to them. I believe Rachel will be the first one because we're going in order of school.
Okay, thank you. So our goal this year, this is year three for us, for writing proficiency. We are using, we're focusing on increasing writing proficiency using our end-of-unit writing assessment rubrics and report card data. I'm looking forward to kind of graphing all three years by the end of the school year to see the progress that we've made. Action steps this year are a little bit different. We are still looking at that data and plotting out that data for each rubric for the end of module or the module writing assessments for each grade level. In addition, this year, what we're adding is creating success criteria for the rubrics. So we're doing some rubric work this year. What does, what does each of those areas look like that we are evaluating? And what are the things that we are looking for in each of those areas to increase consistency within the grade level and some inter-rater reliability, make sure that we're being consistent with each of the students? So just to bring some more clarity to our teachers, for our teachers and for our students because we're also going to provide them with a student-friendly rubric or a checklist, depending on their age or grade level, so that they have, they can be self-evaluating. So that's a big step for them. It's going to be a big step for us. We're really looking forward to the impact that's having. Beyond that, we're just continuing to monitor that data as we have for the last two years. The second goal, we looked at our five essentials survey, and collaborative teachers was an area that we really wanted to focus on. Right now, for last year, our rating was neutral. That's where we came out. We'd like to improve that and increase it to strong. We're going to do that by doing more classroom visits. Teachers are going to observe each other's classrooms or interview another teacher to gain ideas for their own instruction. During early release days, we are providing time for vertical articulation. That will happen next week, no, the 22nd, when we have our, yeah, next week, when we have our early dismissal day. It'll be our first vertical articulation day. We will be visiting each other's classrooms and taking notes. Not everybody's really comfortable being observed, so this is a nice way to start this process off by having them come in and see what is in their classroom, what do they have hanging on their walls, what kind of anchor charts do they have, what kind of visuals do they have, what does their student sample, their student work samples look like? So they'll be able to see each other's classrooms and then following up with that, they are able to share with each other, we're going to use a padlet, some of the highlights that they saw, things that they really enjoyed, effective strategies that they saw in their classrooms, so a way to kind of ease into that observing each other's classrooms. So we're really looking forward to that. It's called a ghost walk. It's going to be a little Halloween thing. And then at the middle of the year and at the end of the year, because we won't be able to get the five essential survey back until summertime, right before the school year starts next year, excuse me, we'll provide a mid-year and end-of-year survey to teachers to get their feedback and to see how we're growing in this area. And those are our goals. Any questions?
Thank you.
So, excuse me, at MIS, our goals are basically staying the same from last year. We're focusing on writing, continuing to focus on writing. Our first goal has to do with writing in math, the CER format, the Claim Evidence and Response format, the same that's used at the junior high. We've been very successful with it. We're going to continue pushing it in our math classes. We're going to focus again this year on the multi-step problems, problems that are involving through more steps. Some of our action steps, some of them are the same. We are focusing a little bit more, kind of like at MIS, we're looking at that success criteria, you know, trying to teach the kids what it looks like for them to be successful. The self-reflection is also a big part of what we're doing this year. You know, the kids get feedback. The kids get, you know, feedback, get feedback from their peers. We found that the kids really don't know how to use that feedback. So we're really this year focusing on both math and ELA, which we're going to see in a minute. We're really focusing on teaching the kids what to do when they get that information back from their peers, from their teachers, incorporate that into their own writing. And that self-reflection is going to be a big part of that, you know, teaching them how to take their own writing to the next step. I know at the junior high, they talk a lot about the metacognition, you know, thinking, this is kind of metacognition light. So we're going to see as they're moving up to the junior. We're continuing the same things we've done. We're talking, you know, our teachers meet weekly, we analyze papers together, we, you know, we read them together, so there's a lot of inter-rater reliability. And then we're going to be collecting those, the samples, looking at them quarterly, just getting the first data numbers in. I was just pulling them up right from the meeting, and everything's looking good for the first one. And so we'll continue looking at all that data as we progress. Our second goal is writing in ELA. And again, a lot of this is going to look familiar. The big changes are, again, the self-reflection and looking at the success criteria, you know, teaching the kids how to take that feedback, how to teach them how to use a rubric and make their own writing better. The rubrics that come with a program, sometimes they can be a little wordy, so we're trying to take those rubrics and make them more student-friendly and, you know, show them how they can take what they're on a piece of paper, think about it, and then incorporate that into their own writing. You know, a lot of that, the self-reflection, the feedback, we're using that for, you know, one of our strategic goals is that responsive teaching, the responsive instruction. So we're, you know, we're taking what the kids are telling us, we're taking those self- reflections, and the teachers use that and implement that within our intervention time, with our win time. So we're combining a lot of different things for year three. It's not just the writing, it's bringing in all these extra pieces, helping the kids, you know, put it all into one piece and, you know, become not just better writers, but, you know, better thinkers in the process. Any questions for me? Thank you.
All right, we'll move right on to the junior high. You're going to see that they kind of dovetail pretty nicely with the other two buildings if you were able to look over this ahead of time. But we are in, for goal one, we're in kind of year three of this as well of building school community and trying to do this in a couple of different ways. If you see in there, it says increased collaborative practices as a staff and then strengthen our school and home connections. And so it's kind of two goals in one that really talks about that school community component of that. So just a highlight around the rounded rectangle, we'll call it that, staff engagement outside of the classroom, so that's participating in the volleyball peer game that we have. It is coming to our sponsored events that we have for athletic boosters. We're trying to get staff involved, and we have good turnout for that, continued professional development as well. I know, Rachel, I'm going to kind of steal what you guys are doing too because we're doing that as well, that articulation. We do vertical articulation as well within the building. Our teachers go up to the high school and do some vertical articulation that way. We did some observations at MIS just recently, just with our social studies committee as well. So there's a lot of professional development that happens that way. Peer-to-peer observations, again, Rachel, I talked about earlier, is also part of that. Within there, we have our DSS screener that really has that component of looking at the whole child and not just the academic component, but really the whole aspect of the child. We are implementing school-wide, sixth through eighth grade, sixth through eighth grade, our new SCL curriculum, which is Wayfinder, which is great, it ties directly into it. The theme of that is belonging, so that's the overall theme that we have. If you've read my newsletter, you probably have seen a little snippet of that as well. And then so beyond that, we have kind of our theme and our motto that I put in my board report in September of that beyond meteors and highlighting that we are trying to look outside of ourselves, not just internally. I know all of you or most of you have had or have middle school kids, and sometimes that's difficult to do is to look outside of ourselves. So the staff has really taken hold of that, and we are, we're trying to instill that into the kids as well. So that's goal one. Goal two, oh, my screen is not moving. The screen up there moved. Let me move my screen so I can see. It is with metacognition, like Mr. McAteer had said, we're in year three of it as well, so a continuation of that. And what we really mean about that is that last line in that white box is we're emphasizing the thinking of our thinking, of how we go about that thought process. We have our CER writing component to that, but as we had mentioned before, we want to develop a consistent method of how we portray this to our students. We've seen great success when we are consistent in how we write and how we verbalize those things to our students. And so we're creating this year a systematic approach to how we annotate our texts. There's a lot of reading, there's a lot of dissecting of information, and we want kids to be able to go into history class and ELA and science. Math is a little different, given the subject, but then throughout the sixth, seventh, and eighth grades, having a consistent format of how they go about annotating, digesting information. And so that's really our step this year is collecting baseline data, developing rubrics, common language, a little bit of data analysis along the way. And the great thing is it's all tied to our Illinois learning standards. So lots of work to be done, but we have a phenomenal staff that's really like boots on the ground diving right into this. Yeah. Any questions?
I have one comment, and this is not to take away anything from Mr. McAteer or Mr. Munch, but I want to take a moment to recognize goal two on MES's school improvement plan. You know, the five essentials is an annual thing that gives us feedback and really insight into, you know, how we're doing according to our teachers, according to our parents, and then, you know, the school report card aspect. But, well, I guess that's separate. But anyway, I really commend you for taking the opportunity to utilize that and try to improve on that area, and I think it will go a long way. So I appreciate that.
And I just want to say thank you to the principals for leading this every year with their staff. It continues to kind of grow and evolve and get better and better. If you remember, we kind of kick things off with our building leadership teams in August, where principals, we look at multiple means of data, academic data, five essentials data. All of our schools have an opportunity to dig through that, and together and collaboratively with their principal, our teachers choose the areas that they feel will have the biggest impact for students. And so that kicks off that process, and then our principals continue to refine that in September with their building leadership team. So thank you to the teachers that are part of that process and really putting together some great action steps. And I do want to commend the principals as well, then, the partnership with my department in really looking at those school improvement plans and together outlining what those early release days will look like. That's our opportunity to put a lot of those action steps into place. So they do a fantastic job of continuing to grow with the process, and so thank you to them, and they're building leadership teams for their work on the plan.
And kudos to all the people that helped put this together. Now the mic's on. Okay, there we go. Action requests. Would anyone like to start us off with approval of previous minutes?
I will do it. I move to approve minutes from the September 17, 2025 regular meeting and closed session as presented.
The second by Lisa. Questions or concerns? Questions or concerns?
Yes, I just want to say I'm going to be voting no on this because I do not feel the minutes document the discussion that was had during the budget hearing. I, you know, I spoke a significant amount about my concerns and little was transposed into the minutes. And I feel that overall, the board comments that were documented in the minutes were disproportionate as far as what was documented and what actually was spoken at the meeting. So for that reason, I am going to not, not approve these.
Hearing no other questions or concerns. Kelly Lynn, can you please help us?
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
No.
Mrs. Oss?
Yes.
Mrs. Tony?
Yes.
Mrs. Zlinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
First, I'd like to thank Dr. Shaw for your time. You always answer my questions very thoroughly, and I appreciate your time very much. Also, I just wanted to say that I was talking to a couple of board members in other districts and I showed them your, your budget and my packet that I go through with your, your work in here. And I don't, two of the board members are like, no way do we have this much work in our, you know, shown to us. This has got to be one of the most transparent, you know, budgets a district can show. So I thank you for that hard work that you put into this. It's really appreciated. And on that note, I move to approve the bills as presented.
I will second. Questions or concerns? Let's go.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Oss?
Yes.
Mrs. Tony?
Yes.
Mrs. Zlinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Personnel report. I move to approve personnel recommendation six, C one and two as presented, subject to successful background check and verification of credentials if applicable.
Second.
Any questions or concerns? I will only share one because if I vote no, they're still going to leave me and I'm mad about it. But thank you for all of the amazing years you guys have donated to this district, the lives and the children that you have improved over that time. I will begrudgingly vote yes, and thank you for all your service. That being said, anything else? Let's go.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Oss?
Yes.
Mrs. Tony?
Yes.
Mrs. Zlinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen?
Okay.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
I know you're here for a couple more years, but there you go. Okay. Let's move on. Consent agenda. Julie, would you like to help us with that?
Sure. I move to approve consent agenda items six, D one and two as presented.
Seconded by Lisa. Julie, we got Lisa. Questions or concerns? Hearing none. Let's go.
Mrs. Oss?
Yes.
Mrs. Tony?
Yes.
Mrs. Zlinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Okay. M O U M T A C D L licensure.
I move to approve the C D L licensure in the collective bargaining agreement between the Mokina Classified Staff Association and the Board of Education.
I'll second. Questions or concerns?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So I just want to go on record that the reason I am not in favor of this is because I have, you know, I just cannot, in light of where we're at with our deficit and our spending and our budget, this is additional money that will hit our transportation, either our transportation fund or our education fund. I'm assuming it's transportation fund, but that, you know, we just cannot continue to throw more and more money at, at transportation without talking about cost savings. So for that reason, I just cannot do this.
Anyone else? Yes, Julie, go ahead.
I, I appreciate what, what Mrs. McMillan has said, but I see it a little bit differently. This is an opportunity to ensure that if we have a shortage in bus drivers, that we have additional folks that are willing to get their C D L and step in when necessary and could help with also the athletics when they're a little short on that. So it, it's not seen in the way that I am understanding it as, as spending frivolous money, it's spending when a bus driver is needed and there is a shortage in the transportation department. Thank you.
And that's a very fair point. This was brought to us as a suggestion so the teachers and coaches can help serve the students, help get people around at a time when we desperately, desperately need people that are willing to step up and get these kids around. I think this is a nice idea, the idea that they brought it up, they shared it with us and helps the kids. I think it's great. It's not a major thing. And for the record, we do have a budget policy. We are within tolerances. Words matter. I don't want anybody getting scared as if all of a sudden we're borrowing money to spend things. We are within tolerances and that needs to be shared. That being said, any other questions or concerns? Let's go. Eric, go ahead.
Quick comment. So, you know, on this idea of having teachers drive, you know, buses potentially or coaches and things like that, this is not necessarily out of the blue novel idea. Anyone that has a student at Lincoln Way realizes that there are several coaches that drive the buses for their students. No way Lincoln Way would be able to provide the sport activities that they provide without coaches driving buses. My daughter's a golf player. Both golf coaches on the girl's side and one of the two on the boy's side all drive the bus to the matches. So, you know, I don't know, you know, we talked about getting, you know, one of those activity buses a couple of years ago, didn't come into fruition, but this is simply not an extra spend. This is, we have to hire a bus driver no matter what to get our students there. If we don't have a bus driver available and there is a faculty member, whether they are in the M C S A or the M T A union, and they are willing to provide that, this is what this is doing so that, to ensure our students can go to those activities. And doesn't have to be sports, it can be other events as well outside of sports that we are approving that a teacher or an M C S A union member could attend. Go ahead.
Sorry, if I could just make one more comment. For clarity, it is an extra spend because we're paying training. So, you know, to have a teacher drive a route where you're paying one person instead of the other, it is true. It's not an extra spend. You're either paying one person or you're paying the other. But this memorandum of understanding includes paid training to get teachers the credential to be able to drive the bus. So that is where the extra spend is, make no mistake. And, and also, the board has approved numerous action items that have been presented to address and be solutions to those very things, to, to driving buses for activities, to having extra bus drivers and, and, and paying more money to retain so that we can have the available bus drivers and maintenance people and all these people that we're paying all this money to, bring them in-house to be able to drive activity buses and serve the needs. And, and this is additional money now for the same, you know, for the same issue. So, so I just want to clarify that.
Kelly Lynn, let's go.
Mrs. Tony?
Yes.
Mrs. Zlinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
No.
Mrs. Oss?
You? Would anyone like to read the next?
I move to approve the memorandum, memorandum of understanding in regards to C D L licensure in the collective bargaining agreement between the Mokina Classified Staff Association and the Board of Education.
Seconded by Lisa. Thank you, Julie and Lisa. Questions or concerns?
Yes. So I just want to read an excerpt of this. It says, "The district will offer paid training to any members of the association who wish to drive a bus for either a day, daily route or extracurricular activity." So, so the paid training is the additional money here and the district has, has also, we've had discussion that, you know, we are not going to add more money to, to the transportation. The word deficit is scary. It is real. It is real. So there's nothing that is being, you know, smoke and mirrors here. So it's money we don't have, it's extra money, and supposedly we've already passed action items that have been proposed solutions to this issue. So for that reason, I'm going to vote no on this one too.
I'm going to have to help you on part of that. It is money we have, it is in the bank. It is absolutely money we currently have. We are not borrowing from anyone. And it wasn't that long ago at this table that we raised the transportation payments to try to attract more drivers. And maybe that can solve all the problems and we have people that wanted to step up and I applaud that their activities are going to help these kids. If it costs a little bit of money, do that, no one needs for free. Questions or concerns? Let's go.
Mrs. Zlinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
No.
Mrs. Oss?
Yes.
Mrs. Tony?
Yes.
Thank you.
I move to approve the memorandum of understanding in regards to compensation when a building aid, administrative assistant three, health center aid, or learning center aid substitutes is a paraprofessional in the collective bargaining agreement between the Mokina Classified Staff Association and the Board of Education.
Took the easy way out on the long one, huh? Anne, I believe that was you?
Yes.
Thank you. Questions or concerns?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So I'm going to vote no on this. And the reason is that basically what this is, is saying that a building aid would provide, you know, I guess, serve as a substitute paraprofessional in the event that the, the district needs it. And, and if that happens, then there would be an increased, you know, hourly rate, which I don't have a problem with, you know, I want people to get paid. But the issue I have is you're, you're, you know, you're shifting deck chairs here, you know, you're, you're solving one problem when creating another one. So, so if the building aid serves as a paraprofessional, then you don't have a building aid to do the work of a building aid. And then you need a substitute building aid or it's put upon other building aids to absorb those duties. So that's my first issue. Second issue is, you know, this does not seem, I don't know what the, what the context is, but, you know, the board was told this, this occurred 708 times last school year. 708 instances of needing a substitute paraprofessional last year. So this is a significant, you know, impact potentially if we're going to be shifting building aids to serve as substitute paraprofessionals if there are 708 circumstances that happen again, right? So I'm concerned about that. And then the other thing is that building aids, I think, are, fall within a category that does not receive district paid health insurance, not eligible according to the Affordable Healthcare Act to qualify. They don't work the number of hours, I believe, that would trigger the district offering the healthcare. So I'm concerned that, that having them serve as a paraprofessional might impact, this has been unaddressed, but this is my concern, having them serve in a different capacity at a higher rate would trigger additional healthcare expenses that we are in a deficit. And when I say we don't have the money, that means we have more money going out than we have coming in, right? So that's what's happening and this is going to exacerbate that in my eyes. So I'm going to vote no again.
Thank you for sharing that. Any other questions or concerns? Let's go.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
No.
Mrs. Oss?
Yes.
Mrs. Tony?
Yes.
Mrs. Zlinsky?
Yes.
Julie, you're on deck.
I move to approve the press policy revisions as presented.
Nice. Questions or concerns?
I got a quick comment.
Go for it.
You're up. So I'm in full support of these policies, one eighteen and one nineteen. This is why we do them. I mean, if you looked at the details of these, these are a lot of detailed school district lawyers that are looking at footnotes and things like that, that are keeping things that none of us could even think about what, how to change and things like that. I would only caution or advise or highly recommend to Mr. Gurney, whoever puts these on our website, that anytime that there is, and there's a ton of them, where it could be procedure changes or program changes or new program that needs to happen, that we do not change and say that we are doing something in our board policy that is not truly in effect yet. So if there are programs, things that need to be developed as, as a result of these, which I do believe there could be or there are, then we should not be stating that those are in place until we have them in place, for lack of a better term. I know that is very redundant, but you're shaking your head, so I think you understand what I'm saying because there are some programs that need time to develop and I don't want our public to think that just because we approved this tonight, we put it in our board policy, that they're not in effect yet because we have, we need time to develop them. So.
And to your point, Eric, somebody's say, develop a program. So it's not that next day that it's.
What a good point.
I would like to make a comment as well. I concur and, and I look at it that if it's in our policy, that means we're doing it and that, I mean, I think that's what Eric is saying and that is the interpretation that people, you know, will have when they read it. I think this is a fundamental duty of the board is policy, establishing policy. And part of establishing policy is our duty to, at that time, confirm that, you know, get some reassurance that the execution of the policy is actually happening. In this case, the board has been told that the execution on all of the things that are contained within these policies is not happening currently and is in development. So for that reason, you know, until we can get the, the confirmation, to my knowledge, you know, I don't know why we would need to do this, but either way, you know, I, I would not, not be in the position where I can approve this until we can have reassurance that the execution is actually going to, is happening.
Yes. Kelly, can you point out which ones, which red lines, if implemented, aren't being done or aren't part of something that's developing? Because I, I just want to make sure that the way that I read it is, is how it differs from the way that you read it. Which, which red line?
No. It's what Bob said. Bob said.
Oh.
Bob said to us that it's in development, meaning it's not done. So it's just, there's not specific, Bob can answer that. I.
Okay. I thought the language said it was to be developed.
That's exactly what it says. I literally just highlighted it. Just so we're clear.
Right.
Press one eighteen, it's the last point.
It's a directive.
It mandates that the superintendent or designate develop a plan to support students in this section. Doesn't mean we have to have it, it mandates a creation of a plan. I had the same question and upon further review, it doesn't mean it has to be perfect and in place, but it means they need to endeavor to get there. That being said, that was cleared up as part of our questions this month and it was good people asked that. I liked it. But it does not say that it has to be fully articulated at the moment.
Okay.
I know we thought it was in the past, it's true we did.
Okay.
But I'm reading it right from.
That's how I want it, that's how I interpret it.
Okay.
So does that help you feel better about, it's a development?
Right. So this is, this word develop or establish?
Okay.
Is all over our board policies, right? It says it all over the place. Will have, will establish, will, will develop. Obviously, there's a law that has triggered the need and the requirement for us to do that. So I guess my question is, what does the law say it needs to be established by? Because we're, we're adopting a policy, you know, do we have another year to develop that or is it, is it in the past? Is it now? Is it upon us? Do we know?
Well, it depends on the, sorry, Bob. It depends on which red line that you're looking at. Now, if we look at the directives from 118 and 119, I would have to look at that specific language. I would hate for you to kind of like whole cloth, say no to the ones contained in these press releases because I just don't see any that have an immediate, this has to be done before you implement it. So I can understand, set that aside. The ones that we're looking at today versus ones in the past. I think Mr. Gurney is working through the policies and seeing if there are gaps, but that's a separate issue. But the ones that we're looking at now are directives. And I would have to look at them specifically for how long they have, if they give a deadline.
Right. And that's my point.
But that's not for, yeah. And that's something that I'd be happy to look at, or I'm sure Mr. Gurney is as well.
So that's my point, is like whatever, Bob, whatever is outstanding, you know, can we correlate that to, if we establish this, does it already need to be in place? Or do we have some time, you know, like, because I agree with Eric. Like, I don't want to pass the board policy and have people believe that we have this stuff, and then we don't. And then also, it falls off our radar to, you know, I don't want, and that is what has happened in the past, too, I believe. So that's the sensitivity.
All good points, because this is important. That being said, anything else? Let's go.
Mrs. Briscoe? Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
No.
Mrs. Oost?
Yes.
Mrs. Tunny?
Yes.
Mrs. Zelinski?
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes. Who wants it?
I move to approve the MJ update. Storage shed project for 176,000 dollars.
I'll second.
Second by Sam. Questions or concerns?
I have something to say on this, Mr. Andreessen.
Oh, go for it.
So I had some questions on this, or more of a statement prior to this. I spoke with Mr. Gurney and Dr. Shaw about it, and I appreciate your time on it. I'm not going to rehash the issues that, the concerns I've had from the past, other than to say that I struggle with the warm, safe, dry. And if it's aesthetics, the nice fence that we have around the garbage maybe would be a better option, but I digress. I just want to point out that I appreciate the transparency on seeking the board's approval for something that didn't actually trigger the need for an approval. So I do appreciate that. That said, I still have the same concerns, but thank you.
And that's kind of you to share, because you're right. It's within the 10% threshold. Technically, this isn't necessary. But in the spirit of transparency, it's being shared, and why it's being shared. And that's a nice thing to commend as well. So thank you for bringing that up.
Does anybody else have any comments, or?
You're welcome to go next. Go ahead.
Okay. So I agree. You know, I appreciate that this is coming before the board. It was a question I had a couple months ago is, you know, the board hadn't heard since we approved it last year, the status of what happened. It was budgeted for last year. And so this was, you know, needed information. It is my opinion, this is just a completely irresponsible spend. We are currently operating without a $176,000 shed. We have a referendum that Zintent even cited as, by our auditors, was to keep students warm, safe, and dry, not construction equipment. And, you know, this original, originally, this project was 120,000, I think was the, to my recollection, the budgeted, you know, estimate when it first came to the table. And now that has, you know, grown to 176,000, which is substantial. I look at this as an opportunity for us to scrap the project and delay it indefinitely in light of our $1.3 million deficit. And, you know, the most troubling thing to me is not the price of the shed, or even how it really fulfills the requirement our taxpayers have on Fund 21. But right now, we are budgeting to transfer $190,000 from our working cash fund into essentially what I'm going to refer to as an O and M transfer, right? So Fund 20, Fund 21, put them together, it's O and M. If we look at, we're transferring 190,000 from our reserves. We are in a deficit, meaning we are spending $1.3 million. We're projecting, we're budgeting to spend $1.3 million, more than the revenue we have coming in. And we're taking money out of our reserves and transferring it into the O and M fund, 190,000. I'm looking at 176,000. So essentially, we're saying we need money from our reserves to pay for a $176,000 shed. That does not impact our classrooms. And I have an issue with that. I don't think it's a responsible spend. I don't want to go back to taxpayers for more money. I don't want to cut programs or cut anything, you know, with this district and have our people or our staff impacted. And right now, we're at a critical point. We have a decision on what we're going to prioritize here, and why. And so I don't feel good about prioritizing a shed over students and staff. I don't feel good about it, and that's why I won't do it. So I challenge my, I mean, I implore my other board members to join me.
Thank you for sharing. As this is money for the shed that is coming from the referendum, which is part of the buildings and grounds project, the envelope, the structure, it should be noted that the board members, when they put that together, made a promise to the taxpayers that that money was not only going to be used wisely, they were going to see before and after pictures, they're going to understand it. And that money was not to be used for the classroom. That money was to be used for the facilities. They are not intertwined. I do not want anyone to think they are. I don't want anybody to think that this money, all of a sudden, if the shed disappeared, that's 100 and some odd grand that could be used towards anything else in the classroom. This is not making the students do without. This is making sure we're protecting the capital investments we made with our equipment. And combines sit in a barn. Your lawnmower sits in your garage. You're in a shed in your backyard. We have to take care of our equipment, and this is no different. But this has nothing, absolutely nothing. And if I'm wrong, Terry, I know you'll help me. This has nothing to do with money that would ever touch a classroom. Just so we're clear, for everybody watching, this shed in no way, shape, or form impacts a classroom. Is that a fair answer?
That's correct.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Because transparency is important. Financials are important. Taking care of what we own is important. Sharing the correct information is important.
I'd like to add, respond to that. We can take 190,000 out of our working cash fund and transfer it to our education fund, which impacts students. Or we could take 190,000 and transfer it to our O and M, which will essentially pay for the shed. That's the two options we have here.
No, no.
So that is how, excuse me, that is how it can affect the students. And I have been in construction equipment. Snow plows are not meant to be stored indoors, okay? This is construction equipment meant to be stored outside. And the majority of the stuff that is supposed to be stored within this shed is somewhere not outside right now. So I contend we keep doing what we're doing currently. It's not damaged any equipment that we have. It's not caused any harm that I'm aware of to anybody. And so we do have a decision between two alternatives. Take the working cash fund and transfer it into pay for the shed. Or take the working cash fund, reserves, and transfer it into the education fund that impacts classrooms.
With all due respect, that is incorrect, with all due respect. And I mean that with all of you sitting here. And if I'm wrong, please help me. We made the promise to the taxpayers when this was done, when the bonds were being paid off at the junior high and the tax rate went down. Even though we still did this, we asked it for their trust and their money, we have used that money to keep the buildings warm, safe, and dry, to protect the equipment we have, to deal with the envelope. This does not impact a classroom. The promise was made. And just so the board knows, there was a forever lock put on this. All seven of you, all seven, 20 years from now, if that money was to be used for anything other than the original referendum, that vote has to be unanimous before that money can be used towards salary, school supplies, or anything of that magnitude. The promise was made to use that money for the facilities. Please do not think for a second that that trust is going to be violated. That trust is there for a reason. That's why we share the reports. That's why we share the pictures. That money is there for our properties, our equipment, and our windows, and other fun things that do not negatively impact a classroom if the money is spent this way. Is that a fair point to my fellow people?
Jim.
Mr. Andreessen, I call the question.
Thank you. Let's go. Kelly Lynn, please. You're okay?
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
No.
Mrs. Oost?
No.
Mrs. Tunny?
Yes.
Mrs. Zelinski?
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Nothing more to add since last month, just that the next meeting's November 10th. Unless Dr. Shaw has anything to share.
I also believe you're coming up with a plan to allow community members to join the committee?
That is true.
Would you like to share anything about that?
That is true. We do have a plan in motion, if you will, that we're going to present to the committee at the November 10th meeting to determine how we will do it moving forward.
And that is November 10th, in this room, right?
Yes, sir.
Good answer. I like that. Thank you.
So Sam, this is a board committee. Can you share with the board your plan now to what you're going to do with that selection process?
No, because it is a board committee that was voted on to Eric and I to manage. So we will present it to the committee first.
So you're unwilling to share it with the Board of Education right now?
I'm going to follow the way a board committee works and share it after the committee itself agrees to it.
So you're unwilling to share right now with the Board of Education?
No, I'm willing to follow the rules.
There's rules that prevent you from sharing right now?
No, there are rules that say that the board committee itself will discuss before changes are made.
Ms. Tunny, we're doing the levy next meeting.
We'll have a couple things on the agenda. One is, are you okay with me? Yeah, okay.
Sorry.
Yeah. The levy, the current levy, we'll be discussing that. And then we'll also be doing the summer projects debrief. So we'll see the project cost, where we're at on the project total spend. And then we'll show some before and after pictures, because that's my favorite part. This is what it looked like, and this is what it looks like now.
I just, I wanted to ask because I appreciated being able to ask a few questions at the last meeting, and I know the levy has been stirring up a lot of talk. So I wanted to make sure that folks are ready for that discussion.
Okay. You good? Okay, thank you, Sam and Eric, for working on that. Julie, do you have anything you would like to add for policy committee updates?
Just a quick statement that I spoke with Mr. Gurney. And we're just going to continue reviewing the press updates as is, give more time to kind of just do an internal review of where we stand. But we'll keep on top of press. But, you know, it's in the list of priorities of things to work through. So we haven't established a meeting yet, but just wanted to give you a tad bit of an update because I know folks were asking before if we were going to have a meeting, but we haven't gotten there yet.
I know you're working on it. And you're always available for questions. That's kind. Okay. You good? Any other questions for Julie? Okay, so Bob, for the information report, I loved how you did the bagels with Bob idea. You had people, not only the staff, the community, and you gave a lot of time for people to be able to come and talk to you. And you just sat there and listened. You tried to hear the voice and see what was going on. I think that was a very nice thing you did there.
Well, big thanks, Kelly Lynn, because she joined me in every one of those sessions and took copious notes where I could really focus on each one of those speakers. So I appreciate all of her help with that. I did want to give a shout out to Luke and Kiki, you know, keeping ears to the ground, really trying to hear the staff, and appreciating that they brought that CDL licensure idea to us. And I really appreciate that. Our MJ parents have been tremendously patient with no buses for any after-school activities, I think, at this point. And I can't thank them enough for their patience and allowance for us to kind of work through this. And I really can't thank them enough. I know Luke and Kiki have answered a lot of calls, and I really appreciate their help with this. A challenge this fall at the junior high. They were great listening sessions. I had bagels afterwards, I think typically. I waited till afterwards. But they were good. I really enjoyed the chance to kind of do some listening. And I really appreciated the staff coming in each of those three mornings. And I really appreciated the parents that came in the mornings and the evenings. They were well-attended. And at the same time, we want to continue, like Erin had said earlier, to continue to do some two-way listening. And that's going to be a future goal. The other piece I wanted to mention was the enrollment. I had made a mistake on the enrollment, so I apologize. If you open that up, the junior high, again, this is my error. They do have one class in math, advanced math, that's 29 children. I had put the range of 19 to 24, but that's my mistake. So I apologize about that to the board. I did want to also note, we're looking at trends. We look at kind of how many students are joining us each year, but also where that kind of group continues through the years. We saw, except for that COVID year, where we started with 145 kindergartners in 2020. And then the very next year, there was 173 first graders. That's a big jump, about 28 kids. Every year of the year, we were looking at five to 10 kids going from kindergarten to first grade as far as an increase. So this is a pretty tiny class of 142 kids. But we're going to continue to watch that bubble group and see what that means. That's all I had.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
I have a couple of questions, Bob. Thank you for your report. Thank you for your clarification of that classroom. That's something you and I, I had questioned. So just for clarity, when your charts here on the classroom sizes say Gen Ed class, that advanced learner class wasn't, there's nothing not factored in here. Is this all the classroom?
PE is not in there. Art is not in there.
Got it. But like, advanced learners isn't not Gen Ed, right?
Right, they would be in there. Yeah.
Okay, so that's where the 29 was missed.
Exactly.
And one thing that, you know, I wanted to, you and I discussed via email was, I believe it was two years ago that, or a year and a half ago, that we implemented an additional section of advanced math at the junior high. We expanded to two sections of advanced math at the junior high as part of our strategic plan and the progress, right? The changes that we were implementing towards that goal. But what came up this week was, you know, I realized that there's one section of advanced math in sixth grade. one section of advanced math in sixth grade. And so it used to be two. It used to be one. It was expanded to two as part of our strategic plan. And then this year it was reduced back down to one, which to me, you know, I was trying to reconcile that in my head. We have an advanced learners initiative. We have a new program being rolled out. The goal of the program, I think, was to enlist more students in, in, in advanced learning setting that if they, if they were able to. So I'm trying to reconcile how that advanced learner group for sixth grade last year would have been more than it is when we are now implementing a new program. So it went down. And then, you know, the classroom size to have 29 in a math class, I can see the dilemma if you were to split it into two.
15, 14, right?
It's not, right? There's, there's no good answer to that, right? Except it leads back to, well, why did it go down from two sections to one? So I guess, you know, if you could follow up with the board and try to help us understand, or maybe just me who, who is asking this, I don't know if anybody else is interested, but. And then is that the, so is that the only outside of gym and the non-gen ed classrooms? That's the only classroom that has 29 kids then? Is that right? Through the whole district? I mean, that's probably.
Not for the whole district. So we have eighth grade.
Oh, I see.
See that? The range is there. We've got a 30 there. We've got a 28 to 29 in each of the grades.
And that's because of the six sections in science and social studies.
Exactly.
So that went, I remember when Dr. Cohen did that, maybe four years ago now. Okay, well, I appreciate that. And then, oh, I just wanted to take a moment. There's been a lot of questions in the community about, you know, the board packet. And I just want to, you know, tell everybody that, you know, part of your process changed with board member questions compared to how we were doing it last year. And even the year prior to that was a, was a different method. And so board members are submitting their questions. And Bob is combining them and then distributing the answers. And so there were 13 questions that the board members submitted this month. And I had asked eight of those questions. There's 259 pages of material that the board members received. So I just want to let the community know that, that. And thank you.
Couple highlights from my report. I wished our principals a happy principals' month. I also had several celebrations this year. Once again, we have multiple staff members that have been asked to speak at conferences throughout the state on different topics, Mrs. Torley and our school psychologist here, regarding some of their MTSS procedures and data review. And then two of our teachers at MIS for their work on co-teaching for ELL. So we're really excited to have them represent our district in that way. I did a highlight of the professional development that occurs. I want to say thank you to all of those who helped contribute behind the scenes for October Institute Day last Friday. It takes a lot of work. So thank you to Lisa behind the scenes for helping out. Everyone who helped set up that day before, the day of tech. Our principals were helping get presenters to where they needed to be. Julie was even walking some people around too, so thank you. It's a big group effort and I really appreciate that everyone pitches in to have a really nice day for our teachers and their learning. I think Rachel said it best, it was a great day to take care of our teachers professionally and personally. So I hope everyone felt that throughout the day. Besides that, I did put a little shout out in there to our teachers who have again partnered with Lincoln Way in supporting hopefully some pre-service teachers that want to go into the field of education as they, our seniors looking to go into college. So I just love that we have so many teachers that are willing to embrace our high school seniors and have them in their classrooms, working with our students and inspiring them hopefully to be teachers in the future. So those are, yes, yeah, yep.
I think there's about 10 of them, right?
Um, I, it changes every year. What did I say? 10 this year?
I thought it was 10. That's cool.
Yep, yep, and all three of our schools. So it's really nice to see those students, some of them former students in our hallways looking to pursue that career. So yeah, that's highlights of my report. Thank you. If there's any questions.
Oh, I'm sorry. I have, I didn't, I didn't hear you ask if, if we had any questions.
Hold on, we, we did revise the questions. In order to be fair to everybody, people are able to ask action items before the meeting because those are time sensitive. And after information, board members are able to submit questions in writing to allow staff to reflect and respond accordingly. That has been the agreed upon procedure for a number of months now. So I appreciate your questions and I ask you to follow our guidelines and to smith in writing so people can look at them, reflect and reply accurately.
So, so just a quick, so, so these items are on our agenda and this is when the board is supposed to discuss. So if I don't have a question, am I not able to make a comment to, to? I mean, we, we commented on, on the school improvement plan, but I can't, I can't comment on, I commented on Bob's report, but I can't comment on Kristin's or what are the rules here?
I think you know, because we were all there and we all agreed to be fair. And we know that in the past, people were asking questions and none of people were getting answers. So we tried to come up with a better plan, which everyone agreed to. And I would like us to respect that process.
So are you not allowing us to make a comment on the information reports? Is, is that what is being said?
I don't agree with how you're framing any, any of that, no. We agreed as a board to ask follow-up questions in writing. So we're not putting people on the spot in meetings where they might not have all the information requested of them. And that is what we've been following for a number of months now, after we all participated in professional development.
So if it's not a question, can I speak?
I don't know why we're being technist. I'm merely trying to follow the agreed upon procedure that we've all agreed upon. So the information reports are there so they can share if there's anything additional and then follow-up questions.
Sorry, I can't hear you.
I am speaking in the normal tone of voice with the microphone running. Megan, you're up. Let's go.
A couple of items here. The first page, you will see a few sweet little faces from the third grade class. This month's student service shout out goes to Mrs. Andrea Lackney. She's been in the district for multiple years. She is absolutely wonderful and consistently goes above and beyond to support students in her classroom, not only in delivering rigorous instruction, but also engaging. So the little activity you see the students working on, she has thrown a little artistic vibe into it. They're doing a writing activity and you can see they all have little paintbrushes and are painting the different portions of the, their, their writing samples. So a fun little activity to change it up. Who knew you could add art to ELA, but it happens frequently. The three other items I have, we have our first special education steering committee. This Friday, we're super excited to bring this team back together and continue to work on our plan to support and improve special education practices and procedures across the district. In addition to this, we are holding another CPR training. I don't know if my goal is to get everybody trained in the, in the staff, but we are already at 31 staff members who are trained across the district. And we will have three different opportunities throughout the school year and then also looking into the summer months to see if staff would like to be CPR trained. This is ranging from administration to PE teachers, to building aides, to paraprofessionals. Anyone really that wants to receive this training has that opportunity to do so. And special thank you to Tom Murray from the Mokina Fire Department for continuing to do so. I'm realizing too, we are now offering it to some of our substitutes as well who frequently provide support in our programs. The final item I have here is our family newsletters. I told myself I would only do them seasonally, so seasonally being four times a year. And I'm already at two and we're only in October. There's just a lot of really great resources for families in the special education community. So the first page of those are focused primarily on updates in the Student Services Department. But also the next two pages are different resources, sensory friendly opportunities, family support groups, just different opportunities for our students with special needs to engage in. These will continue. I don't know how frequent. It might get to a point where I'm doing them monthly. And you get to see them in Mokina moments and then also from the Student Services Department. And that is all I have today.
Love it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Terry, you're up.
Thank you. I'd like to kind of give a shout out to the business department with, I know Don Shaw talked about my team, but Janet, Diana Lopez, Kim Zepanich, they did a phenomenal job working with our auditors. We're very happy with another year of a clean audit. Very happy about that. We did receive our ISBE AFR from the auditors today and that we did again this year, receive the financial recognition score from ISBE, which is the highest recognition score. So we did get our FY25 score today. And just so you know that you've been presented with that, the AFR and the audit are both loaded on to our website. So that information, thank you, Lincoln from across the room, helping me get into Thrill Share to post those reports to our website. So shout out to Lincoln over there. And then also to Brittany Tyber, our new food service coordinator. She's just started off the year with a great going with offering her two entrees, which is something different that we haven't had before. And when we break for tonight, she does have something that I'll bring out to everybody to sample of what she brought in for our board highlight and her picture from her report. And then also for our bus drivers, we did hire six bus drivers last month. One of them we did lose. Two of them are actually driving. One is testing this Friday to get licensed. And then the other two, we do anticipate them to be licensed within the next month. And then also the last one is that we are at MES starting a recycling program, going a little greener, even a little greener than that in Mokina. So we're happy about starting that recycling program. And then there's some action items that will be, or there's some information items that'll be action items next month. Thank you.
Thank you. Lincoln, how we doing over there?
Just have good news this evening.
I like that. What you got?
Yeah. So a big shout out to Janet Walker in the business department. She is the first recipient of the real champion award, real spelled R-E-E-L.
That was a nice trophy you gave her too.
Yeah, it's awesome, right? I have 12 more of those trophies for staff members. All right? If, you know, you do, you do a fantastic job like Janet did in being vigilant and reporting legit phishing attacks. Not all phishing attacks are created equally. Some people are targeted and Janet is in the business department. But believe it or not, you know, usually the business department staff members get targeted. It's called spear phishing more often than not than regular staff members. But Janet has done a phenomenal job of realizing that an email is a phishing attempt. And she also notifies me right away in this last phishing that she got phishing email. She got, she notified me and I was able to scan the network and did see that other people did receive the email as well. And we were able to rip it out, fish rip it out before they were able to open up the email. So thank you Janet for being awesome and doing your part and helping us stay safe and secure in Mokina. Other good news, Fiber Project met with Urban Comm and the Fiber Team. The Fiber Team is confident that at the junior high, they can remove the cables in the pipe without disturbing the existing cable. I know we originally said that we may have to be, do it on a week where there's no students there in service. They would have to cut all the cables, pull all the cables out and pull the new cable through. But they're confident they can just pull the phone cable out and leave the existing fiber. We'll find more information about that during our walkthrough when Fiber Team actually comes out and we walk through. So we're targeting around Thanksgiving to start getting the cable pulled and over buildings. So, and then December, Christmas break is when we actually turn off the old fiber and turn on the new fiber. So that's the current plan for that. And then a little information on our YouTube video that we posted, our first YouTube video. I have it open in front of me right now. We are up to 60 views. We had two in the last 48 hours. The unique viewers is up to 39. So it doesn't tell you how many people you viewed it multiple times, but obviously there were some people who logged in and viewed it more than once. The average duration viewed was around nine and a half minutes. So that is all I have this evening.
I think it's so cool you could find how people found the video, whether it came from Board Book or Google or the actual YouTube page itself.
More than 50% came from Board Book. Only 10%, I believe, came from Google. And then.
That was a much lower number for that. So it was, yeah.
Yeah, Facebook, Facebook was the, the other biggest part at 25% currently, 25%. So it's a little bit different than what I had in the board report. It's at 25%.
So Mr. Andreessen, you just made a comment to, to Lincoln and, and I was prevented from making a comment to Dr. Johnson. Just wanted to throw that out there.
I'm not having this. I was not asking a question. We have an agreed upon procedure that I'm asking us to follow. And I was making a comment. There we go.
I was going to make a comment. You cut me off.
Principals, you submitted reports this month. Do you have anything special you would like to add in addition to your written report? Not that I'm putting you on the spot, I'm just asking. Yes, Dave, what you got? I love how you raised your hand.
Sorry, I don't get to raise my hand.
That's enthusiasm right there.
Just one thing, our fourth graders during, for EL education, the first module, they work on poetry. It's challenging, you know, trying to comprehend it, trying to understand it. But as their performance task, they all write a poem. They come up with something that is meaningful to them. They spend a lot of time putting it together. And the, the big last piece of this is they're going to present it. This year, we're going to invite parents in. And I would like to invite you guys in to see it as well. There's an email coming your way right now with times. It's next week. It's next Wednesday and Thursday. There's a couple of times each of the day. So we would love to have you join us if you want to come in and listen to the summer of our fourth grade poetry. Please come on in.
Luke, what you got?
You might have had my board report. I had put in here a couple of things that I would follow up with you guys regarding. So unfortunately, our boys' volleyball team didn't make it too far in our conference tournament. But our cross-country runners did run sectionals last weekend. I don't know if you did see this, but we've had four individuals that are going down two-state, which is great. A special, special shout out to Stella Sicarelli. She won sectionals. She's won regionals, our conference tournament, sectionals. She has a really good chance of actually winning state this year, which is awesome. So if you ever want to try to go run with her, I discourage that because she's running like five and a half minute miles right now. So a huge, huge shout out to her with that. And then just a highlight of our, of our teacher. I put Mallory Tahako as their, as their teacher highlight with this. And it was more for, like, her work that she does within the classroom is phenomenal. But in the morning, kids are coming at 7:15 in the morning. It's early. It's very early. They don't necessarily want to be there that early. But she is just a bright shining face along with our other morning supervisors that we have there as well. But she definitely goes the extra mile to greet every kid with a smile. She writes some inspirational quote on the board. Sometimes draws like a unicorn or like a happy little pineapple on the thing, whatever it may be. So she does a really good job of going the extra mile to really encourage the kids and welcome the kids to the school. So I just, I wanted to voice that. So thank you.
One other thing, I believe our baseball team almost took first in state and that happened after our September meeting. And that is such a highlight for our kids and our community. Sorry to steal your thunder, bud, but.
No.
Just so cool. I was very happy for those kids. What an amazing opportunity.
They were great tonight. I mentioned that in my report.
I know you did.
My Friday newsletters, it's been a lot about the baseball team, so they've done a great job.
Love it. Thank you. I, I was just looking. I didn't, I didn't cross it off. How we doing over there?
Great. We're doing great. As Dr. Shaw said, we are.
As Dr. Shaw said, we are starting a recycling program here at MES this year. Thank you to Mrs. James and Mrs. Lackney for kicking that off and getting student council to be in charge of that, to really being responsible for the management piece, for ensuring that all of the grade levels are recycling, so we're doing paper and cardboard. And thank you to Dr. Shaw and Dave McAtee for helping us with that, making sure that we have what we need, so we appreciate that. I know that the school's really excited, and I know student council's really excited. It's something we wanted, wanted to do for a long time, so I'm glad that it's all coming together. Yeah, yeah, so we're gonna do it, we're gonna do it, we're excited. This is National Bullying Prevention Month, and we had, in this room, we held four assemblies. They were great, we talked about be a buddy, not a bully, and that we are constructing a great wall of kindness here. So, in our wall in front of the central gym, you will begin to see bricks being built, which is when people, when students see each other doing kind things for each other, and they're writing them down, and we are constructing the brick wall, we'll put them on the wall. So, we're really excited about that. We got a bunch started already that are being cut and posted on the wall, so our students are doing a great job of that. Next Wednesday, October 22nd, is wear, wear orange for National Bullying Prevention Month. So everybody wear orange next Wednesday, whether you're here or at work, wear orange. And we're doing announcements in the morning, just talking about how to be kind to each other, respect each other, respect their diversity, and just kind messages throughout the day. And yes, thank you to Dr. Johnson for acknowledging that Dr. Lucas Nié and I will be presenting on our MTSS process at the, I'm gonna get it wrong, but like, National Association of School Psychologists. And so we're excited for, to do that in the spring, we were thrilled that we were accepted, so excited for that. And finally, shout-out to Mr. H., Mr. Hippelhauser. I love that we got him to a board meeting, it's so great. Mr. H., besides being just a great, just a great teacher, he is the behind-the-scenes guy. He elevates everything we do without even telling us he's going to elevate it. So he's doing things behind the scenes. I don't know who's gonna step in and take that role when he's gone, because he just does things without being asked. He just, he just has that knack for knowing what we need and what's gonna make everything better, so shout-out to Mr. H., he's gonna be missed. Yeah. Thank you.
Love, thank you. And he was instrumental in helping this project tonight, a, as we're, as we're all, I believe it was him and I, Carrie Dablahoff were the two teachers that were able to come tonight. I know everybody's got other things going on, but it was nice they could join us, and I like that. Okay. Anna, would you like to share anything extra regarding the Lincoln Way Special Education Minutes? I know that they were submitted earlier, and maybe that's the best there is, I just wanted to.
Just two things really. Invoices went out at the beginning of the month, which, that would have been in September, because we have our board meeting the last Tuesday of the, of the month, so that's it. And then, there's the talk about the S Fund, which, you know, we're still learning about it a little bit, but did say that the schools should be receiving those checks directly, not her, but you, not the district should be. That's it, welcome.
Thank you for going there and helping out with that in addition to this work, thank you. We had three FOIA's, they have been asked and answered. We have items that will be, that were on information this month, they will be added to the November 19th agenda, as other items will be as time moves on. For the good of Mokina, I like sharing good things, sometimes you get a chance to, so I got a little gift for you guys. Rachel. Dave, thank you, my friend. Are you sure you can do that to keep me as well? Thank you, my friend.
Excuse me, Mr. Andreessen, I think, or Jim, I'm sorry, you skipped item number 10.
Well, I have an ability to call president's guidelines when I wanted to share nice things, so that's what I did. And I, I can do that kind of thing because it's president's prerogative, so I'm very happy you guys are here helping out, and I'm glad that you were at the meeting this month, and I was able to share that with you. Thank you. As far as next steps and follow-up related discussion and/or action items, which, I mean, those are gonna be on the agenda for next month as needed, you are all welcome to submit items if you would like them on the agenda.
Excuse me, this is, this is an item on, on the agenda that we should be discussing. I, I don't, I don't understand why discussion is being shut down here. That's what it seems like's happening, so can you clarify?
I don't know why you're doing that, I also don't know why you're interrupting me. But, okay, I mean, it's anti-bullying month, and I'm wearing orange, but, okay, let's play along. Next steps and follow-up relates to discussion and/or action items, we had no items for discussion this month. And/or as far as follow-up during action items, we had a lot of discussion during action items. I'm not sure what you're getting at, and I'm not hearing anything else from the other board members. I, I don't know what you're getting at. Would you like to elaborate what you're getting at?
I appreciate the opportunity to speak. So, there's a couple things. One is, last month, we had a member of the community come to the board and speak, and, and he was allowed to go beyond, far beyond, the three-minute timeline that we have for public comment. So, I just wanna verbalize my objection to that. We cannot hold some community members to that rule and not implement that rule for other community members. Now, Mr. Romero, it seems, was coming to the board to speak about our relationship with his organization, or the organization that he is a part of. I would ask that, in the future, the board be advised of that presentation in advance, which is normally our rules, that we would like no surprises. That was a complete surprise that he was here, we were not forewarned, we were given no opportunity to submit questions, and we were just put on the spot. And then he was allowed, as a community member during public comment, to go far beyond, and, and we're, and, you know, the president now is, is cutting off other community members, so I object to that.
I'm gonna stop you because you're wrong.
I'm not done, excuse me, point of order, point of order.
No, no, you are not gonna interrupt me.
Point of order, I'm, I'm speaking.
No, no.
I'm speaking.
Mr. Romero, Kelly, Kelly, Mr. Romero is not here for public comment.
He was here last month for public comment.
Mr. Romero was here to showcase the 843 programs that are in our building.
That was not on the agenda.
That is directly here talking about our students.
That was not on the agenda, he was a member of public comment.
I don't know why you're pursuing this.
You can look at the board minutes.
I also don't know why you're talking over me. I don't know why you're talking over me.
You're interrupting my time, I'm still talking.
No, no, no.
Okay, can I continue?
I am merely correcting the fact, Mr. Romero was not here as a member of the community and is not limited by three minutes, I will not allow that to be miscommunicated to our public.
Okay, well, I
He's here, no, no, no.
I will not allow you to interrupt my time.
Kelly.
You're interrupting my time.
Kelly, this is not your time. This is something that is proven fact, I will not let it be misrepresented. He was not here as a member of the public talking about three minutes. He was here as someone that works in our buildings showcasing the 843 program for the betterment of our students and staff. I, I don't understand what this is.
Okay, Jim.
It's really unfortunate. He is a member of our staff that works here in our buildings every day.
I would like to continue. Are you done speaking? Can I continue? The second, and, and anybody can, all you gotta do is pull up the board minutes, go back to the video, he was a member of public comment, he should have been advised it was not on the agenda as a discussion item, and now we are in a situation where, again, I feel I'm being silenced. The board president here is taking the liberties to comment upon whatever he wants to comment on, or ask questions, or elaborate on things that are presented, but then certain board members are not. And so, there's, there's a difference strokes here, and I, and I don't appreciate it, we are equals, there is no hierarchy in this board. So, I ask that you be respectful and recognize each board member is your equal, Mr. President, I'm sorry, Jim, and, um, and
Man, in an anti-bullying month, I am really impressed.
I don't, I don't believe I'm bullying you.
I am absolutely impressed.
I don't believe I'm bullying you, I believe you're silencing me, so I, I ask that you revisit that.
I, I will share this again. We attended public, we attended professional development. One of the previous concerns was, there were a lot of questions that were submitted, and in order to facilitate answers, they were asking, is it the will of the board to spend time answering those questions? I know some people are frustrated by that. I brought up the idea, I did, that people can submit action item questions before the meeting, because that's time-sensitive. Any other follow-up questions they may have after the information should be submitted in writing to allow our staff time to reflect and answer accurately. We all talked about it, we all agreed on it, we've been doing it for months. Somehow that changed tonight, not quite sure why, but it did. I am trying to follow the agreed-upon procedures that we all chose to follow. Now, if you choose not to follow those, that is a choice someone can make. As far as, you want to call me Jim, you call me Mr. President in a condescending tone, I don't care. I am here for our kids and our community. If you want to make this personal, that's on you, and I'm sorry for that. It's not personal to me. I am trying to follow the agreed-upon procedures other people have agreed to, and that's what I've been doing. So, I, I don't know what you're getting at, I, I, I don't. So, with that, would anyone else like to share for the good of Mokina? Bob, what would you like to share?
I wanted to, and I appreciate both of you letting me speak, but I, I feel like what happened last month was on me as a first-year superintendent. Mike approached me, said he was interested in approaching the board instead of waiting till October, which is what I should have done. I said, why don't you come up and speak during public comment? So that was on me, and I apologize.
So, the board president allowed it, the board president should have stopped it, and that did not happen, and the board president is stopping other parents from going beyond that, or other public commenters, I should say? And so, I, what I'm, what I'm getting at is, we can't have different rules for different people. If Jim is able to make comments on discussion at the board table, I should be able to make comments and discussion at the board table, and that is not what is happening. I'm being silenced, they, without even knowing whether I'm gonna ask a question or make a comment, and then Jim is taking the liberties, and Anna, and whoever else, we could, we have it on video now, so everybody could look back and see what board members were allowed to speak and what board members weren't.
And to that effort, I absolutely gave you free latitude to ask questions for Mr. Shaw when he was here regarding the audit. No one slowed that down, at all. So, again, I, I, I don't know what to say. But, no one is trying to silence anyone. People are trying to follow the agreed-upon procedure, that was agreed upon by seven people, including you. Yes?
I apologize.
Go ahead.
Mr. Andreessen, if I, if I might suggest that for the next meeting, we distinguish when the questions can be asked versus comment, action, information items, and, and, you know, maybe we just reiterate what folks had agreed upon earlier, so everyone can be treated the same. It, you know, bears repeating, when action items, questions, you know, submitted before can be, you know, just perhaps reiterate, and then folks can have the dialogue individually.
I'm merely trying to run the meeting the way you all agreed to.
Right, yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'm not criticizing, I'm just making a suggestion. I would like to, to hopefully end on a positive note. Trunk or tree? Alright, I mean, come on, smile, trunk or tree, I got a pumpkin shirt on. October 25th with the Mokina Police Department and the Park District starts at 4. Come on, let's be happy.
You know where that is, please? At the oaks? Or at the barn?
No, it's at the barn, isn't it?
I thought it was at the big club.
TBD.
I'll look it up. Be determined.
Anyone else for the good of Mokina? Hearing none. We will be going to the closed session for the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, and collective negotiation matters. It is 9:26, we will resume the closed session in 10 minutes. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay.